I hereby call to order this regular meeting of the Board of Education for Wilmette Public Schools, District 39, this Monday, December 13th, 2021. Will the clerk please call the roll? Amy Paling, yes. John Caesaretti.
Yes.
Anne Hart, yes. Bonnie Kim, yes. Frank Panzico.
Yes.
Mrs. Schneider Fabe, yes. Erin Stone, your. Assistant Principal Jacqueline Brennan has some very special Harper students to lead the Pledge of Allegiance.
Good evening, I'm Jackie Brennan. I'm the Assistant Principal at Harper Elementary School, and I have some really special Keep 39 students here who'd like to introduce themselves and share a little bit about what they love most about kindergarten.
Hi, my name is Kate and my favorite part about kindergarten is everything.
Hi, my name is Devon and my favorite part about kindergarten is Spanish.
My name is Max and my favorite thing about kindergarten is all.
My name is Elizabeth and my favorite part of kindergarten is doing arts and crafts.
My favorite. My name is Claire. My favorite part of school is sharing care.
My name is Teddy and my favorite thing about kindergarten is gym with Mr. T.
Please rise and stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you so much for coming. Our favorite part of our meetings is having you here. So thanks for being here with us.
Well done. Oh my goodness.
Our High Crest art teacher, Linda Parrots, has shared fifth and sixth graders artwork in the boardroom behind me. The fifth graders created drip paintings using color theory and patterns. Students learned about artist Jen Stark and her contemporary murals that are found on buildings and in airports and museums. Fifth graders also learned how to create grids using patterns and repetition. Sixth graders created pop art using paintings, using a viewfinder, to create individual composition. Students learned about monochromatic colors and tints and shades to create a higher level color. Hopefully you can all check those out a little closer. I seek a motion to approve the minutes. I move to approve the minutes of the November 15th, 2021 Board of Education and Executive Session Meetings and the December 6th, 2021 Special Meeting and Executive Session. May I have a second?
Second.
The motion has been made and seconded. Board members, are there any comments, errors, or omissions for minutes? Seeing none, all those in favor of approving the minutes as submitted, please indicate by saying yea.
Yea.
Motion carries by general consent. This is an opportunity for the audience to address the board. Are there any audience members here? Don't see any. Do we have any online? Okay. We will move to board reports. I will turn it over to Mr. Panzico for facilities development.
Thank you. We held our committee of the whole meeting last Monday, and for the facilities portion, we had an update on the Harper-Ramonah and McKenzie projects. Mr. Papa Nicholas reported that the bid opening was held on November 23rd for the Harper project. The total cost for construction came in at $2,837,000, which includes a contingency of approximately $120,000. Ramona and McKenzie projects are following on. The next budget will be for McKenzie, which is currently at 60% construction documents. And the bid opening will be in early January and approval will be at the January 24th Board meeting. Mr. Papa Nicholas also reported on Ramona, which is at the 50% budget assessment level, and that will also be done in January for the January 24th Board meeting. Finally, we started to talk about, those were the projects for the summer 2022 completion. We started talking about the projects beyond 2022, and Mr. Boltemeyer reviewed the five-year plan for construction, and we just started to look at what options and costs were being looked at for the next five years.
Perfect, thank you very much. Mr. Caesaretti, school finance.
Thank you, President Paling. We had three presentations during the school finance part of the meeting. The first was a presentation on our debt certificates and existing debt structure by Elizabeth Hennessy of Raymond James, who presented for basically our structure and financial plan for the next five years. The next presentation was by Nick Cavallari Baker-Tilly, who provided an overview of our fiscal year 2021 audit and for District 39 and the Wilmette Community Special Education Agreement. Our third presentation was by Mr. Boltemeyer, who reviewed the district's annual five-year projections, financial projections. The presentation summarized the primary assumptions used in the projections, projections by individual funds and operating funds, and one alternate scenario. The alternate scenario incorporated the impact of Senate Bill 508, which is law. If the last few years of property tax refunds hold steady, then Senate Bill 508 would be worth an extra $1 million per year to the district. The board discussed these projections. That was it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And for strategy, Mrs. Schneider Fabe.
Thank you. So Dr. Krimis Golei stated that the DSAF team held its first meeting on November 18th. During the meeting, the team reviewed their work charge, discussed team norm, reviewed the focus of their work for the year, and established subcommittee assignment. Each team member was assigned some homework to complete prior to the next meeting, which is, was on December 9th. Mr. Panzico reported that the first meeting was a good organizational meeting. He's serving on the Goal 1 Subcommittee. Ms. Stone stated that the members of the DSAF represent by a broad range of voices and representation from across the district. She's serving on the Goal 3 Subcommittee. Both members requested any input or engagement.
That is terrific. Thank you. So we'll move to liaison reports, and I will start about CRC. The CRC met on December 7th. As a reminder, their focus this year is looking at social emotional learning. So they started by discussing their anticipated timeline to be prepared to present a report to the board at our May meeting. And then they worked in their groups for a little bit of time. One group is looking at current parent and community understanding of our social emotional learning, and they drafted a survey to launch mid-January. Group two is looking at surrounding and other similar district engagement of parents in social emotional learning. And they are finding that a lot of the websites that they're looking for don't have a lot of parent resources. So they are looking to see which schools have SEL as part of their strategic plan as their next step. Group three is looking at national trends in this area, and their next step is to dig into how do we evaluate the effectiveness of SEL, and that is harder to find in their research. It's definitely an area to keep looking at. Group four is the audit group, so they are auditing one of the previous CRC reports from 2014, 2015, and so they continue that work. The educational foundation meeting will be held in two days on December 15th. And I will turn it over to Mrs. Kim for IASB.
Great, thank you. I have two items to read for, one of which is that its November 18th, 2021 meeting, the IASB Board of Directors voted to end the association's membership in the National School Boards Association. According to the IASB, this decision follows repeated attempts by representatives of IASB and other state associations to bring about changes in governance, transparency, and financial oversight necessary to ensure the viability of the national organization and IASB's membership in it. The IASB Board previously suspended membership that was to take effect next year, but after the NSBA's September 29th letter to President Biden seeking federal help encountering threats, harassment, and violence targeting school officials, and saying that some of the actions could be classified as domestic terrorism, the IASB decided to terminate membership effective immediately. Moving on, the IASB held its 2021 Delicate Assembly on November 20th, and of which I attended along with Ms. Stone and Dr. Krimis Golei. And so they considered a total of 23 resolutions and positions at the Delicate Assembly. For the third time, member boards of education voted against a proposed resolution that would call for IASB to support legislation that would allow school districts to set school safety and student protection policies that would allow trained armed school teachers and staff. The member boards voted against the resolution 2022 to 181. Among the proposed resolutions approved by the membership were indigenous people curriculum inclusion, cannabis sales tax revenues for public schools, timing of the reorganization of the Board of Education after an election, virtual open board of education meetings, expansion of broadband access, federal funding for landscaping, and pre-service teacher education in literacy. A proposed resolution not adopted related to childcare reimbursement for school board members. So out of all of these, we were pretty much in line with all the votes except for the federal funding for landscaping. Anyways, that's my update.
Great, thank you for being there and for the update. Ms. Stone and Mr. Panzico, further update on the district's Strategic Advisory Team?
For the first goal, we spent time on looking at academic performance. We had a very productive 45, 50-minute breakout team. We got through two-thirds of the items, which means that we were spending a good time discussing items, and we get a number of recommendations. So both of those are good indicators. We have another meeting scheduled for January as a working group so that we can be better prepared for the next formal meeting in February.
We've had two DSAF meetings since our previous General Board meeting. One was November 18th, which Mrs. Schneider Fabe referred to. That was where we went over our norms and our focus and broken the subcommittees. And then we had a meeting on November, sorry, December 9th, where we spent almost the entire time in our subgroups by goals. And my subgroup was discussing initial steps for coming up with KPIs or key performance indicators. Our group was productive and collaborative, and we are establishing subgroup meeting times to happen between now and the next General DSAF meeting. It's going to be on February 7th.
Great, really important work. Thank you. The Wilmette Village Intergovernmental Cooperation Working. That's a long title. Mrs. Kim and Mr. Caesaretti. I don't know if there's an update.
Not really, since the last committee of the whole meeting. We just sort of agreed, I think as a board, that we would second the village's proposal to start examining sustainability and mental health concerns. Is that right? Terrific.
And we would highlight our efforts on the strategic planning side.
Thank you. I'll turn it back to you, Mrs. Kim, for the legislative update.
Hey. Shortly after our last school board meeting, Governor Pritzker signed SB 1169 into law. The new act limits the scope of the Healthcare Right of Conscience Act, which prohibits discrimination against anyone for their conscientious refusal to participate in a particular form of healthcare services contrary to his or her conscience. The amendment clarifies that HCRCA does not allow school employees to opt out of COVID-19 testing. The new law will go into effect June 1st, 2022. And my second item is, while technically not legislative, this was included in the legislative report from IASB and I thought was noteworthy for us. So the U.S. Surgeon General has issued an advisory on the youth mental health crisis that has been further exacerbated by the COVID-19 pandemic. Even before COVID-19, one in five U.S. children between the ages of three and 17 was experiencing a mental, emotional, developmental, or behavioral disorder. Additionally, one in three high school students reported a persistent feeling sadness or hopelessness. 19% of high school students considered attempting suicide, while 16% admitted to having a suicide plan, which contributed to 6,600 suicide deaths in 2020 among youths aged 10 to 24 years of age. Early studies have indicated that depression and anxiety symptoms among youths have doubled during the pandemic. The U.S. Surgeon General's advisory outlines a national and multi-jurisdictional framework, including what educators in school districts can do to help solve this growing crisis. And that link is on their website.
Thank you. We'll move to information items, starting with written communication. And if you want to just continue on throughout. Great. The board received several written communications from Laura Hemmer, sorry, Dr. Laura Hemmer, regarding health and safety protocols during lunch periods and throughout the holiday weeks. Written communication was also received from Dan Johnson regarding a district-wide masking policy in the spring for fully vaccinated students. In terms of our administrative announcements, we have a number of announcements, really just updates for the board and our community. First of all, in terms of COVID-19 health and safety protocol, we do continue to closely monitor health and safety protocol as well as COVID-19 cases reported at school and community transmission rate metrics, vaccination rates for staff and students, and any recommendations to adjust our school protocol. Right now, we haven't had too many adjustments needed. However, we do anticipate additional updates to be provided in January by the Health Department and plan to review any need for adjustments at that time. At the same time, we are planning for second semester, and as we met with as an administrative team, we celebrated for just a small moment that we aren't planning for major adjustments second semester in terms of our scheduling, our educational models after winter break. The board will recall that last year, we spent a lot of our winter break trying to determine how we might be able to merge pods and bring more students back. With all of our students on campus, we're excited to continue with the plans we have in place. We do plan to continue full in-person instruction for all students after winter break. The only exception might be if the Health Department advises us otherwise at some point. Right now, we do not anticipate that. So at this point, we don't anticipate needing to make major adjustments to our plans, our schedules, the courses students are taking, but we'll continue to work with the Health Department as we monitor the situation that continues to change. We hope that we'll just be able to continue staying the course in our schools, and we're excited about that. I will mention that shield testing continues to be available. That is our free PCR testing available to any students or staff members who have registered. We are making that testing available on a weekly basis or an intermittent basis, meaning someone could come to test if they're registered to do so at any time. We continue to offer it on Tuesdays and Thursday afternoons, as well as on Saturday mornings. We anticipate doing so through January, and then we'll reevaluate. There may be a need to adjust our schedule as more and more of our students are fully vaccinated. We may see fewer needing the weekly testing. So we're hopeful we'll be able to continue to make that available. Throughout winter break, we also will continue to have testing available just once a week, and additional information will go out in the principal's newsletters this week. We also continue to monitor vaccination rates. As mentioned previously, we continue to monitor updated guidance and request that our students and staff submit proof of vaccination to the district once that has been completed. That simply helps us with planning, and we do anticipate in January, as more and more people are becoming fully vaccinated, I anticipate that the Health Department may make some options available to school districts at some point, and that information will help us to be able to evaluate whether or not we can implement those options. So again, information is being sent directly to families about those submission opportunities, and we do very much appreciate that. At the same time, we're planning for winter weather. We've communicated out to our families the need to send students with warm clothing because we do want to maximize the outdoor space as much as possible. But at the same time, we monitor for health and safety reasons. We very much hope not to have to cancel school this year, but if we do, the first day of canceled school would be a traditional snow day, meaning not a remote learning or e-learning day, simply a snow day. After that, we will look to implement our e-learning plans if a second or third emergency closure day were needed. Again, we hope not to have any, but it's good to have a plan in advance, and we've received some questions, so I wanted to highlight that that is our plan at this point as a district. We're also already starting to plan for registration for the upcoming school year. We will plan to reimplement our January information out to families. Last year, we needed to delay that because of so much uncertainty, but this year, we'll be communicating out to families sometime in late January with the registration information for new students, for returning students, as well as for those students enrolling for the first time in kindergarten and looking to also opt into the KEEP 39 program. So again, look for information coming out after the new year. And finally, our Freedom of Information Act request. The district received a commercial FOIA request from Smart Procure requesting any and all purchasing records from April 13th, 2021 to the present, and also a FOIA request from Angel Tormas of Steep Steel LLC requesting all active leases or licenses for cell towers, rooftop antenna, and other wireless installations on District 39 property, along with 24 months of payment history. And that concludes my reports to the board. Thank you. Do board members have discussion or comments? We can move to annual business. Excellent. We will start with our long-term enrollment projections. The board has been provided a report, including some details of our projections for the next five years. And Mr. Demonti is here to provide a quick summary and answer any questions the board may have.
Good evening. These slides are the same as in your board packet that I'll be sharing on the screen. And we'll go through them quickly. The first slide shows the overall trend of district enrollment. We're down about 8% from 10 years ago in 2011. As you may recall, there was a report from November that detailed our enrollment. This graph here shows the number of students living in rental properties. As you can see, there was a substantial decline over the last two years of our families that rent. That decline is equally split K4 and 58s. Of course, they could be the same families with similar groups, but there was a noted decline in the collection of leasing. The next slide shows building permits for new residential construction. This has been relatively stable in recent years. There are only a couple of properties that may impact us in the foreseeable future.
Bonnie, I don't think the slides are advancing on the projected.
They are not, huh? Yeah. I appreciate the interruption. Can you try this again? There we go. Thank you. So I'll just pick it up, seeing that you have charts where it was moving off the chart. Building permits. So it's been relatively stable in recent years. There are only a couple of properties that may impact us in the foreseeable future. One is 1925 Wilmette Avenue, which was the former site of the American Legion post. It recently opened with 16 units of non-senior affordable housing. So there could potentially be families there. And there is a construction project that I believe broke ground at 1210 Central Avenue, which once built years from now. I believe it's slated to end in 2023 or open in 2023. It will include 109 rental dwelling units, so that would impact McKenzie, High Crest, and Junior High. Next, we look at annual home sales, and we can see that sales have been relatively consistent over the past six years, with an increase in 2020 and 2021, both in sales and average sale price. When you pair this data with the rental data that I showed previously, we may be trending toward families with less mobility. We keep an eye on kindergarten enrollment, which has been increasing. Part of this could be, could be parents feeling more comfortable with our COVID mitigation measures, or now that we have KEEP 39 in our four elementary schools, we've talked about that before, capturing kids at a younger age, and then they potentially will stay with us. The vast majority of our students, as you may know, are enrolled in KEEP 39, so that enrollment, as you see by the red line, is increasing, which will mean more kids for us hopefully as the years go on. What I have here are the school charts, which in previous years have been trending down. This year's projections due to a variety of factors, including increased birth rate for our area, are actually trending upward. So an increase of birth rate, an increase of our KEEP 39, or enrollment in our KEEP 39 program, some other factors are showing projections that are trending upward. So the first one is Harper. Here we have Ramona. And these are going out five years. McKenzie. Central. High Crest. And Junior High, which dips down but would come back up as those kids age through the system. And then overall. Speaking of overall, our K4 schools, as you saw, and High Crestville School enrollments are projected to increase. This could be due in part to the higher birth rates, like I said. Home sales increasing, average sale price may give some more stable enrollment as well. We'll mention your high, of course, is, as you saw, directed to slightly decline and then stabilize. So this is different, as you have seen in previous years. We've taken questions. Of course, there is no crystal ball, but this is what we have at the moment as far as our projections, at least for five years. Are there any questions?
I mean, I had one. So I remember, I think, Tony, in a prior presentation, you might have mentioned, someone mentioned the population of Wilmette went up substantially, like a thousand people in the last 10 years. Do I remember that right?
I don't remember sharing that information.
Maybe not. Oh, gosh.
Maybe it was, maybe it was your village, the Intergovernmental.
Who knows? Well, I didn't go to that meeting, so. Who knows? Anyway, so I was thinking it had gone up. So it got me wondering about what sort of views. The absolute numbers are helpful. I wonder what the rates are around school.
I don't know. I mean, as you know, our. We're generally, well, we're landlocked, so unless there's new construction, something's getting torn down and something's going up. Like that property on Central Avenue, which is, again, it's supposed to be one, two and three bedroom apartments. Uh, but that has the potential to bring in some families. They are being marketed as luxury apartments, so I'm, I'm not quite sure how that fits in. That's not the storefronts. That's just the residential side. Um, but short of that, it would be just families moving in and families moving out, which. You shouldn't be seeing huge growth. There's not new subdivisions or areas, but. This is what we know at the moment. So yeah, I, I have not heard that uh, comment, but.
I, I don't know. I guess my one observation would be this was really positive.
It does. Yeah, it does. We have uh, in, in, I think it's positive from. The aspect of the last two years, we have heard the narrative of kids not returning for. Um, it's just uh, staying at home or being homeschooled or. And what we're seeing here, what we're predicting here is kids either returning or, so I, I, and. Pair that with recent construction projects, that should help you feel good about the work that you've done. Should have room for these kids. Thank you.
Shall we move on to the next item? Sure. All right. Uh, fiscal year twenty twenty-one financial audit was reviewed at the committee of the whole. I will ask Cory to give a quick update.
Thank you. Uh, later this evening, um, we will ask the board to accept the fiscal year twenty-one financial audit. Um, this is the same information that Nick Cavallari from Baker Tilly presented on last Monday at the committee of the whole. Um, before I move on to the next topic, I did have kind of four things, like four key takeaways from the audit that I, at least that I have in my mind. One, we continue to be over forty percent fund balance for operating expenditures. Um, so we're hitting one target there. Um, each year the state provides a financial profile score in their AFR. District thirty-nine is estimated to have the highest score attainable. Um, again, this year, and that had, and the nice thing about that is there's five different components to it. So it's, it's measuring multiple things. To achieve that. The audit opinion that Baker Tilly offered up was the best one that we, we would be able to obtain through an audit. And then the last part would just be that they always provide a kind of a management letter to the board. And there was no material weaknesses or significant deficiencies, which are, you know, which would be considered like, you know, bigger findings or comments. So they had none of those. So there's kind of the four takeaways that I have related to the audit.
Thank you. Any questions there?
I, I had one that was kind of tied to the housing report. Um. I know most of our revenue comes from real estate taxes. What um. What part of the state and federal income revenue, which are relatively small numbers, is tied to. Enrollment numbers versus more standardized uh. Delivery.
Well, I mean, the first thing that comes to mind that's tied to student. Numbers is evidence-based funding and the formula that's in place, there's um, an amount per student. And then there's additional amounts if a student were to be identified as special ed or um. Uh, low income. So there's additional amounts that are awarded to districts for that. However, the formula has a whole harmless and so. Whatever you would have as your funding, say in the current year, they, they promised them that the following year you would never go less than that. Um, assuming that they didn't have to do, you know, cuts across the board. And so then any incremental revenue that they add at the state level is, for, for a district like thirty-nine, District thirty-nine is very small, so. From what I would suggest, even if we had a nice spike in enrollment, we wouldn't likely see much benefit from that. And that would be the primary driver of additional revenue for a school district based on, based upon enrollment. Um, you could maybe see some small amounts on other state or at the items at the federal level, but. Um, it would honestly, given the size of our budget, it probably wouldn't be noticeable.
And, and that actually was the, the question that I was asking. So, because I mean, it's the fact that our enrollment is. Projected to be fairly flat is actually better than many communities. Um, but the, the only risk then would be what percentage of our income. Would be tied if that was. The flat um, enrollment actually was declined and basically sounds like two things, home harmless, old harmless. Um, mitigates that. And even if that wasn't there, you get relatively small. A percentage of our revenue on a per. Child basis. So there isn't a lot of risk there no matter what. Okay, that, that, that was, that was the question. I think from a community standpoint, it's great that we think the enrollment's flat. Um, again, a lot of communities can't say that, so I think it's a help to the community, but I just wanted to double check that. There isn't any potential risk. I didn't think there was. Thank you.
So the next item is the Harper bid results for summer twenty twenty-two construction. And again, I'll hand this to Cory to just give a quick update. We talked about this at the committee of the whole meeting.
All right. So I just wanted to share my screen. This is the bid summary page that's included in the board packet. Um, the nice thing is we, we had some really favorable uh, bid results. Lots of competition in all three bid package areas. And you can see in the yellow that those are the. Um, low bidders that were asking the board to approve later this evening. In the bid package one, you do see the Lodestrow line item in red. They, after uh, scope review was done, after the bids were opened, um, they identified a mistake in, in their bid and they. Requested a withdrawal, withdrawal with no penalty, which given that nothing else had happened, we, we agreed to. Um, before I go to the next um, topic. I just wanted to remind everybody the key components to the project at Harper this summer. We have partial roof replacement, uh, replacement of both boilers and some unit vents. We're replacing the piping that goes from the boiler room to the unit vents in the classrooms. And then while we're doing that, we're upsizing the piping to prepare for potential air conditioning to the classrooms in a potential future project. And then as part of alternate number one, in the middle of the building, there is a, there's a group of four bathrooms that would be. Completely renovated and, and modernized. Um, one of the kind of the. Things that we had noticed that's been going on there is that the, some of the toilets just auto flush every couple of minutes regardless of anybody's been talking about right now. So that would be a, a nice, a nice part of the upgrades as well. The overall price compared to. The last known estimate was about seven hundred thousand less. So the total bid is about two point eight million and the last estimate was around three point five.
Questions on that item or should we move on? Okay, we'll move on to the five-year financial projections. Again, this was reviewed. Uh, Cory, would you like to give an update?
All right. So tonight we'll just walk through the annual five-year projections. With the board. Okay. So I just want to highlight before we get to the summary pages. Some of the, the bigger key estimates that would really move the needle on where the projections go one way or another. Uh, property taxes, you know, whatever, the, the items that we use as assumptions in that group. Um, we got our estimates from, from Bloomberg. These are Bloomberg CPI estimates for future years. The, through eleven months, we're at six point seven percent inflation for the calendar year twenty twenty-one. We have a month to go. And then you see a three point seven, two point four and two point oh for the remaining years in the forecast. Um, another big exo, big assumption is the new growth amounts. We are using our ten-year historical average of fourteen point oh five million. You can see that based upon the, the history of the last ten years, the. Range in the value of that new growth is as low as just over two hundred thousand and as high as seven hundred and forty-four thousand. Um, we are estimating that the net collection rate for property taxes in the model is ninety-eight point six percent. For reference, the change in net collection rate of point five percent is worth about two hundred and ninety thousand. Local revenues and the add-in transportation funds reflect the current fee structure approved by the Board of Education. We have slight increases in future years for the keep thirty-nine enrollment. We are in around two hundred fifty-one or two hundred fifty-two. Um, students for the current school year. For items like evidence-based funding and some of the other state grants, we are assuming that they'll remain, remain flat. On the federal level, we would normally assume that for that group as well, except for we've had three rounds of S R funding. Um, through the pandemic, we're carrying that in through fiscal year twenty-three and then twenty-four, and then when all that funding dries up. We pulled that out of the projections for the last three years. Personal property replacement taxes are projected to remain flat for all five years. On the salary and benefit side of things, we have included the three point nine percent increase for certified salaries. And then the last four years would be subject to future negotiations. Similar for our, all of our support staff salaries, they'd be subject to negotiations as well. You see an item, a bullet point two, we, as part of the uh. Calculation of salaries, we, we know a certain number of teaching staff that would. Be retiring at the end of specific fiscal years. We have included those retirement savings within our, within our projections. Health insurance, we are projecting to grow at roughly five percent per year. Since we have the revenue side of the keep thirty-nine program, we have amounts for the expenditure side as well. The I M R F fund is projected to grow based upon support staff salaries for each of the years. One nice thing about the I M R F fund, since it contains the, the I M R F benefit paid to that pension system. Recently, and, and compared to what I've seen in my career, that particular rate paid on salaries is about as low as I've seen. Um, and we, we have a pretty good rate and it's actually been trending down slightly. Insurance expenses in the TORT fund are projected to increase by about eight percent per year. And then after, for the next year and then about five percent for the year after. We've put three percent increases for purchase services and supplies throughout all five years in the, in the. In the projection. Item number ten shows kind of a summary by type of construction project. What you, what we might expect over the next five years, as I mentioned last week, we'll be working through that. All those projects over the next handful of months. Really prioritize and make sure they align with our five, new five-year strategic plan. And then the last item, before I get to the summary pages, is just the special tuition costs. We've budgeted that to grow at about three percent per year. So as I scroll down, the first. Kind of summary that we'll look at is our operating funds. Fund balance as a percentage of expenditures. So what you see here is five years of actual data, then a projection for fiscal year twenty-two based upon the budget. And then you see five, the next five years where the low is just over forty percent. And we're hitting up near forty-four percent on the high end. Um. We'll continue to monitor that as we make big decisions and moving forward. And just for reference. I mentioned earlier, um, during the audit part, that one of the, in the ISB awards a financial profile score. Um, one of those metrics is fund balance to revenue ratio, a little bit different than what we. Use as, as kind of our, one of our key metrics, but their, their baseline is twenty-five percent, whereas forty-five percent, which. Offers a little bit level of extra reserves or conservatism in our budgeting and planning. Right. So the first summary that we'll see. Here, this is the operating funds. And so the operating funds for District Thirty-nine are, are the education fund. Operations and maintenance, transportation, I M R F, working cash and TORT funds. And we kind of look at those together as our, as our operating funds. And as you can see, you see some steady increases in both the revenue and expenditure side. And really, when I look at this, I think I'm like most people, I gravitate towards that bottom row and kind of see what, what direction. Um, is our percentage of fund balance heading based upon whatever the updates that we've made. As you can see, all five years, including the current year, fall within our, our target of being at least forty percent. The next slide. Do you like the page? So here is an alternate summary of the operating fund projections. The one change that is on this one that wasn't on the prior page was the introduction of Senate Bill five oh eight, which is law. And as I think I've mentioned before, if historical trends were to stay consistent. That could be worth roughly a million dollars per year to District Thirty-nine. I've incorporated what Senate Bill five oh eight into all five years in this. Summary, as you can see, each year is, is a little bit higher and as it grows, as it moves further to the right of the page. Our next summary page is taking a look at operating revenues and expenditures. Um, going back five years and then going forward five years. The top one is the prior five years in the current year budget. As you can see. The one nice trend that as I look at both of these slides is revenues exceeding expenditures in all years. Some years that's by more than others, but there's a really nice trend to be able to look back and look forward and see. See that level of consistency um, across the district's financials. Go down and take a quick look at the revenue and expenditures for the operating funds. So one of the nice. Things in looking at the operating funds is Frank asked the question before. You know, there are many things that can impact us, but on the revenue side, we're for District Thirty-nine. Um, you see eighty-four percent of the, of the budget is property taxes. Hence the reason we focus on it so much and it really does drive the, the revenue side. Other things, you know. Can impact us positively, negatively, but really nothing can, nothing does to the extent that property taxes do. And then. We scroll to the expenditure side. We see, we see kind of a similar thing play out where. You know, even, even like purchase services, the, the line item for operating funds is over five million. However, that's only eight percent of the, the overall budget. And so when you put salaries and benefits together. Um, not surprising, our people is where our costs are. It's, it's over eighty percent. So, you know, what generally drives the story for most school districts and in particular District Thirty-nine is what's going on with. With, with property taxes and in combined with the salaries and benefits that the district is providing to. Uh, with that said, I will open up any questions, comments? I see none. Yeah.
Quite a bit the other day. Thank you for so many excellent presentations. I will move to board policies with Dr. Chris Scully.
Yes, thank you. The board has spent some time looking at these policies in particular with a keen eye on policy 2:60. It has been revised based on the board's discussion at the Committee of the Whole Meeting and the proposed language was reviewed by our legal counsel. So I think we have settled on what could be acceptable to the board and reflect the board discussion as well. And so that is recommended for approval on this evening's agenda.
Nicely done, the board. Okay, well, then this brings us to the second opportunity for the audience to address the board. Is there anybody online? No, okay, and there's also no one in the building who looks to speak to the board. So we'll continue with our agenda. The next order of business is the consent agenda under the action items. Are there any items that the board would like pulled from the committee? Ms. Stone, please proceed with the motions.
I move to approve the personnel report dated December 13th, 2021. I move to accept the fiscal year 2021 Annual Financial Audit and Comprehensive Annual Financial Report for Willmott Public Schools as presented by Baker Tilly U.S. LLP of Oak Brook, Illinois. I move to approve as third and final reading of Board of Education Policies 2:40, Board Member Qualifications 2:50, Board Member Term of Office, and 2:60, Board Member Removal from Office. I move to approve the accounts payable for bills listed between November 16th, 2021 through December 13th, 2021 in the following amounts. Educational Fund: $466,492.16. O&amp;M Fund: $49,314.15. Debt Service: $747,771.25. Capital Projects: $178,804. TORT Fund: $247,152. For a total, all funds of $1,838,791.40. I move to approve the manual checks issued between November 16th, 2021 and December 13th, 2021 in the following amounts. Educational Fund: $318,382.52. O&amp;M Fund: $29,538.90. Debt Service: $1,479,938.75. Transportation: $63.46. Capital Projects: $3,500. For a total of all funds of $1,831,423.63.
May I have a second?
Second.
The motion has been made and seconded. Would the clerk please call the roll?
John Caesaretti?
Yes.
Ann Hart?
Yes.
Bonnie Kin?
Yes.
Frank Panzika?
Yes.
Lisa Schneider-Fabes?
Erin Stone?
Yes.
Amy Paven?
Yes. Yea's have it, motions carried. Motions carried. So we'll move to conference items, starting with old business. The Harper bid. Oh, I apologize.
I have it. Do you want me to just proceed with the motion?
Yes.
Okay. I move to award base bid package plus alternate number one in the amount of $2,837,900 per bid specifications for the summer 2022 work at Harper Elementary School. Monarch Construction Company for an amount not to exceed $807,900. Accomplished Mechanical for an amount not to exceed $1,752,000. Mini Incorporated for an amount not to exceed $278,000. For a total Harper Elementary School project cost of $2,837,900.
May I have a second?
Second.
The motion has been moved and seconded. Would the clerk please call the roll?
John Caesaretti?
Yes.
Ann Hart?
Yes.
Bonnie Kin?
Yes.
Frank Panzika?
Yes.
Lisa Schneider-Fabes?
Erin Stone?
Yes.
Amy Paven?
Yes.
Yea's have it, motion carried. Now, we'll move to old business, starting with the board retreat. We had a retreat last Monday in the evening. And so this was a time to follow up on those next steps. So I'd love to turn it over to the board for thoughts on that. We could start perhaps just in thinking about our agenda. I know that it was talked during the meeting about trying to link our agenda in theme with our strategic plan with some coalescence around the idea of, as the agenda is listed, just indicating which strategic plan item it relates to. Is that something that people would like to pursue? And if so, we'll charge the administration with thinking that through and moving forward.
Dr. Chris Scully, is that a difficult thing to accomplish?
I don't think it could be, it would be too difficult. It depends on how complex the board wishes it to be. But a simple designation of which goal area a discussion might fall under and a reminder of maybe what that goal is should be simple enough for us to accomplish if that is what the, if the board might find that useful.
Yeah, I think it's super helpful, you know, and just to sort of like make sure that we're continuing to focus on goals, you said?
I agree, and I think over time it might be interesting if we realize, oh, it's been six months and one particular goal hasn't been on our agenda. It's a good way to just keep ourselves accountable, but in a simple, you know, simple.
I think the simplest way to do it would be to maintain the structure of the agenda as is and simply make a note somewhere on the agenda or for the board, which goal area. And if there's a specific strategy, which strategy is connected to that.
I think that would make more sense too, but I guess I'd recommend having it on the agenda so that we can go back and look at it, not just kind of as we're talking about it, mentioning which goal. Again, like just that one word goal, and for any item that's fun.
Yeah, I support it too. I think it's a great idea. I think as well as keeping us focused and on track with those goals, it will also help us to identify if there's a need in the future to, you know, change or evolve direction or the goals sound like it's a great idea and also support. Our work ties with minimal, I thought, a recommendation on how to put that on the agenda is great.
Other follow-up?
Just remind us that we all promised to hold ourselves accountable and one another to focusing on ends of whatever the discussion might be rather than the means, unless we have questions about how that, things that we don't understand.
We also had discussion on an item that John had brought up about the committee structure. Do you want to talk about that now or is that the next committee of the whole meeting we talked about?
We might not solve it now, but for sure.
Well, John, I mean, I think you brought it up for it to summarize.
Yeah, I think it was, my recollection was we, the initial idea was to reorganize our committees to align with the goals. And I think in discussing that concept, we got more towards it. Maybe we should put the goals on the agenda and maybe try to do it informally. So I think we're heading in that direction, Frank, and maybe where we're heading is a compromise.
I mean, you brought it up and we had a discussion, but.
Yeah, no, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Oh, no, where we landed, we also talked about our committees. Because it's Committee of the Whole, we're all participating in the conversations, that that structure in general may be something we want to think about. Not changing the meetings, but do we assign ourselves to different committees? Not since we all participate in all of the conversations. Right. And maybe there still is a chair of the committee who facilitates the conversation that has a role. But essentially, they're all a part of every committee in function. So I don't know if that's something we want to consider.
Since we can put it on the agenda for the next committee of the whole. Because I think there's also some value to having a summary read out at the board meeting from several different people, so.
So I think that could still happen. If there are still a chair for the different, something other than committee.
Right, well, that's.
Other categories, somebody would still chair that. So it would be shared by different board members, but just the other members would be assigned.
But I mean, I think that can be, in to flesh that out, we can do that as the Committee of the Whole.
All right, well, we'll follow that up. Are there other things from that that people wanted to mention? Great conversation. Glad to have that time together.
So as next steps, then we will work on getting some kind of indicator onto the agenda of the goal areas that each agenda topic might touch. So that should be easy enough. And then we'll continue to revisit the Committee of the Whole structure at the Committee of the Whole meetings. Maybe as John suggested, the first step is aligning the board meeting agenda items. And then we might start to see a flow that makes some sense if down the road you want to revisit the structure completely.
Sure. I don't know how other members feel. I also don't get urgency around it for that to start happening in January. Like, I think unless people disagree in the time that works for your administration and if that happens, if we're moving towards it, that's great.
Actually, some of the KPI are moving forward, but they're not available yet. Just to make sure that we're ready for that.
Right, right. Great. Any other old business? Any new business? There? Okay. Seeing none, I seek a motion to adjourn. We do not have any.
Don't have any for executive sessions.
Okay. We need a motion to adjourn this regular meeting of the Board of Education.
I move to adjourn this regular meeting of the Board of Education.
May I have a second?
Second.
Motion having been made and seconded, all those in favor of adjournment, please indicate by saying yea.
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 Motion carries by general consent and the time is 8:05 PM.